Welcome. Sorry for the delay. We just got tied up in a brief meeting. Appreciate everybody with us. This great day in July, 7th, day of July 2020. This is our Weber County Commission meeting. I'm Commissioner Gage Froh. With me, to my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey; to my left, Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We welcome you, members of the public. Appreciate your attendance, so we do have this meeting being Zoomed as well. We'll start off this morning with our Pledge of Allegiance. April Hatfield is here. Will lead us in that. invocation will be given by our own Leanne Kiltz, our Recorder, Surveyor, and thought for the day, our own Commissioner Harvey. Let's go to that point before public comments. April.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here as the county commission for Weber County, we're thankful for all thy many blessings. We're thankful for this freedom that we have in our country. We're thankful for those who died for our freedoms. We're thankful for all thy many blessings which thou hast bestowed upon this country, this United States of America, and at this Fourth of July and for our independence. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for these men in front of us that guide and direct us. We ask thee for thy wisdom and knowledge that thou might be able to understand and make the decisions which will help our county move forward. We're thankful for all those people that work diligently daily in the operations that we have. We're thankful for all the employees. We're thankful for all the people in Weber County. We're thankful for the opportunity in which to govern this great county and the election which we have. We're truly grateful and thankful for all thy many blessings. We are thankful for the mountains, for our country that's, for our county that's to the east and to the west of the mountains. We're thankful for each other's friendship and our understanding, and we're thankful for thy love. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Sheriff Froh. You know, as I think back about the Fourth of July and different things that have happened, I really appreciate being free. I've been so lucky in my life to not know what it is to be oppressed, to be under tyranny, to have a country that is not free. So I don't know what the difference truly is. I'm sure that I can't appreciate it the way that others do. But I've liked to say that I've always learned from people's examples, and I don't have to go out and burn myself to know that fire is hot. I don't know that I have to go try something dangerous to know that it's exciting and exhilarating. Those things have just never happened for me. But as far as the Pledge of Allegiance, I do remember in my lifetime hearing different versions of the Pledge of Allegiance. I remember the first time I heard the Pledge of Allegiance by John Wayne, and how touching that was. And I also remember Red Skelton. I remember, and they're available on YouTube if you ever wanted to hear it. They're really, they're really touching. But I also remember people who love our country and love the Constitution, people in our own community like Kathy Smith. And another one is sitting right here in our audience today, and that's Sylvia Salisbury. I'm sorry to embarrass you, Sylvia, but one of the things Sylvia taught me when I first was sitting here about three and a half years ago was how to properly say the Pledge of Allegiance. You know, I thought that was funny, but I thought Mrs. Newton, back in the second grade, taught me how to say the Pledge of Allegiance. But I remember, but I remember her teaching me the Pledge of Allegiance, and she broke it up into segments, little clips, pieces of information, so that I would remember how to say it, that I could say it from memory and not have to look at the words that were printed, similar to this on the desk. Sylvia taught me that many times we insert commas where they're not needed. And for instance, "I pledge allegiance to the flag." Everybody pauses there. But "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America." There's no comma between "of." "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation." No comma there, no pause. Many times in a lot of places we go, we pause. "It's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So I would hope, I'm conscious of that all the time, and oftentimes, each week as we say the Pledge of Allegiance, oftentimes, I know in this body now, we run "one nation under God" together, but we didn't used to. And you'll hear, a lot of times, I'll be the only person, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of." Many times, there will only be a couple of us that say "of" right after. But since many of you in the room are from our own house here, I would hope that we will remember to omit those commas in the future and to say the Pledge of Allegiance correctly. So, Mr. Chair, with that, one, I would like to thank Sylvia Salisbury for teaching me. But two, I'd like to stand again and say the Pledge of Allegiance correctly, the way it was intended, and that'll be the conclusion of my thought, if we could.
I'm assuming you'd like to lead us in that.
May I?
Yes, yeah. So you're up.
Okay. If you'll rise, please, and...
Repeat, repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We appreciate that, Sylvia. We appreciate you as well. Let's move now to our public comment section of our agenda. Those in the audience, or I believe that we all may have some. I'm going to check on possible comments coming in from Zoom, but we'll start with anybody in the audience that would like to come forth and give us their public comment. Again, please just give your names if you wouldn't mind, and we'd remind you, please keep your remarks to three minutes.
Thank you. David Cram from Huntsville, Utah.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to comment on the recent, I think overcrowding and heavy traffic congestion in the valley this past weekend over the Fourth of July, and then pretty much over every weekend we've experienced this summer. I think I heard that you, Commissioner Froh, went up over the weekend and took a tour of, to see what's going on up there.
That's correct. Myself, the sheriff lieutenant, and Forest Service Law Enforcement.
I think it's extremely evident that, you know, there needs to be an action plan put in place. We're just seeing, you know, large amounts of people on the Wasatch Front coming up to the valley every weekend and just overcrowding the beaches, the waterways, and of course, the roadways. These reservoirs are relatively small bodies of water that are being abused by overuse. There's a dire need for more responsible protection and more accommodated growth, not more accommodated growth around these reservoirs. A serious multi-year action plan must be implemented soon. Valley residents who see what's happening daily should also be involved on a committee to come up with positive solutions with the government agencies also involved. A need for a reservation beach parking and boat launching system needs to be implemented instead of just coming up to the valley and expecting to get on the water or beaches. It could utilize a smartphone app to let persons know when the recreations are full. Electronic billboards could also be utilized at the mouth of Ogden Canyon, Mountain Green, and other areas to alert motorists of full conditions. Also, I feel that a dedicated need for seasonal ticketing officers and possible towing services on the weekends is direly needed. Regular sheriff deputies do not have time to do this on the regular duties up there with the amount of traffic that we're seeing. Also, more improvements need to be made at all the beachhead entrance areas. Like I said, I think it's come to the point where this is over, there's overcapacity up there. And there needs to be a reservation system similar to occupancy levels that you see at a theater or a restaurant or any buildings to safely control the traffic and numbers of people up in those areas. So emergency vehicles, et cetera, could, you know, always have access. I noticed on, over the weekend, that there were over 100 vehicles in the no parking areas on the side of the roads, excuse me, on the shoulders. I didn't see any ticketing happening by the officers. I did see one accident there at Middle Inlet with a tow truck and a sheriff there, but there definitely needs to be more dedicated ticketing going on for littering and no parking violations. Also, the intersection at Route 39 and 100 South in Huntsville, I think a lot of you know, is a very dangerous intersection. Mass amounts of traffic are going at that four-way intersection with no, no four-way stop systems. There's mass amounts of traffic coming back down from Monte Cristo, backing up a mile in that direction, trying to get across and back, back to Ogden or back down to town. And it's a dangerous thing. So that, that intersection specifically, I believe, is a, is a major candidate for at least a four-way stop or possibly a rotary system at that intersection. Finally...
Sorry. Rotary, you mean like a roundabout?
A roundabout. Typically, back east, they're called a rotary.
I've not heard of that term. That's why I asked.
Yeah. It is a rotary or a roundabout. And there has been talk about doing that instead of a stoplight system, possibly be, be much more economical and efficient. Also, there was huge backups at the port ramp, no turnouts there to let traffic flow by to Eden. Also, another problem somewhat related is at the top of the Snow Basin intersection on Trappers Loop. In the wintertime, that traffic backs up all the way from Snow Basin intersection miles back down to Mountain Green, and there's no way for traffic to flow into Huntsville over Trappers. People have to wait there constantly to get by. And emergency vehicles would also be impeded by, by those conditions at Trappers Loop and the port ramp. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cram. I appreciate you taking the time to be with us. Everything you just described, I've seen with my own eyes. I understand everything you said was accurate. But please be aware, I'm sure you are aware, that the county does not have the ability to solve these problems on our own actions. We, the Pineview Reservoir, the land around it, is under the purview of the federal government through the Forest Service. Obviously, we're working with the Forest Service. In fact, I believe I've got a meeting with the Forest Service tomorrow afternoon to discuss these, these issues. The state has, obviously, the stake you mentioned with the port ramp, the highway over Trappers, they're state highways. That's UDOT. They're not county roads. So we, as we, again, as we work with these partners, which we are, we're in the process of working with UDOT. We're in the process of working with the federal government, and then obviously, our own sheriff's departments, you mentioned. You may not be aware that this past weekend, they towed seven vehicles off Cozy. You may not also be aware that we really, because of our budgeting process, we have one full-time deputy assigned to Ogden Valley. So anytime we have situations like you just mentioned, which we had, it requires us, requires the sheriff to pull personnel from the lower valley up there, which now impacts our local cities down here. So, and I believe on, I believe it was Sunday, I drove by Middle Inlet, and I saw some cars on the road that were five or six cars that were ticketed. So we appreciate that. I would encourage you to send your remarks. I think there were some comments made that you don't, you didn't feel that the government officials were headed in the right direction, were making the right decisions. Let me say this. We are open to any discussion, any suggestions you have at any time. At the same time that it takes, it's going to take a body that can bring all our partners together to make any type of logical dent in this issue. If, I guess, I would say, if you think the public can do that better on their own, then I'm all ears. But it's bringing the federal, state, county together with one plan. It doesn't happen overnight. So again, comments are always welcome. I would appreciate it if you were proactive. Send us your emails. Send us your suggestions. But to make the comment that we don't listen, we don't listen to the public, I think is, is not fair. We were actively and are actively working on this issue, Mr. Cram.
Yeah, I think you've misunderstood me. I didn't mean it in that context, but just that I believe public involvement is important, and I think you would agree with that.
Right. Okay. Well, I apologize if I took it wrong. That was the way it viewed. And I think the sheriff and I, that as we spent an hour and a half on Friday on the vacation or on the holiday up there, looking firsthand at the, at what solutions were possible, believe me, we are actively working this problem. We're aware of it. My fellow commissioners are aware of the situation, and we are dealing with it in a manner that we think is logical and timely.
I appreciate that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Additional comments? I got notice from Shelley that we do not have any Zoom public comments. Anybody else from the public? Welcome to come forward right now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Jenkins.
So I just got an email here from Melissa Freegang, and I think it's appropriate, we should mention.
Go ahead.
Ralph Price passed this last week.
Thank you.
And Ralph's a colorful individual, really nice. He, he has worked as hard and worked government hard for the people he represents, the homeless, and he's done street outreach for us. We've, from a personal point, we've created a very good friendship with him. Wonderful individual. You recall, he comes in here in his wheelchair all the time, and Ralph's just a wonderful guy. And he worked very hard. I'm trying to think of his organization. What's it called?
I forget it.
It's coming.
Bad.
I'll have it in another 15 minutes if you just want to talk.
Right. Anyway, just to be noted that he passed away this last three or four days, and he'll be missed. Ralph's a wonderful individual. Sometimes he causes a little grief up in the office. He came in, wanted to just kind of come in pushing his way through. But we all laughed and worked with him best we could, and Ralph was a wonderful individual. And like I say, he represented the homeless very, very well, and he worked street outreach for them. Agape. Thank you, Melissa. She's listening. Anyway, we'll miss him.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, Ralph obviously was never afraid to have his voice heard, talking about public comments, and we appreciated the time that he spent with us. And again, he was a great example of somebody taking an active approach with government and had his voice heard and had a passion to make sure it was heard. And we will miss him.
You bet.
We will miss him. So appreciate that, Commissioner. Any additional comments before we move forward? If not, we're going to go on to the consent agenda. F. Consent agenda, F1, request for approval of warrants 2868 through 2887 and 45581 through 45706 in the amount of $648,815.47. Two, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $145,322.83. Three, request for approval of ACH payments to US Bank in the amount of $230,585.18. Four, request for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on June 30th, 2020. Five, request for approval of new business licenses. Six, request for approval of change order number one on the granite construction North Argon Divide contract to show quantities changing for various items, items and add an Agabian basket repair. Seven, request for approval of retirement agreement by and between Weber County and Kelly Murray. That's the consent agenda. Commissioners, questions, comments? Before we go to Ricky for explanation. Seeing none, Ricky, do you want to review that with us?
Yes. Good morning. We issued 14 purchase orders this week for $145,000. Fifty-seven percent of that amount, or $83,000, is for the jail, which will go to replace the chiller for the Kiesel facility. Ten percent, or $14,000, is for 911 dispatch, and that's security and firewall hardware. Nine percent, or $12,000, is for IT, and that went to purchasing computers for the attorney's office. Seven percent, or $11,000, is for the transfer station, and that includes tire repairs, fuel, and some lab testing metals. As far as checks, we issued 147 checks this week for $649,000. Thirty-seven percent of that amount, or $242,000, is replacement vehicles, scheduled replacement vehicles for the sheriff's office. Nineteen percent, or $122,000, is for the library. That went to pay annual licenses for software, as well as to purchase books, materials, a projector, and RFID cards printing service. And then 11 percent, or $68,000, is for our roads, and that went almost exclusively to buying asphalt and road supplies.
Thank you, Ricky. Questions for Mr. Hatch? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion that we approve the consent items, one through and including seven, as presented today.
Thank you. We have a motion for Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
And a second. Commissioner Jenkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent. Agenda items one through seven are approved. Let's go to action items. G. Let me mention, before we go on to action items, if there's anybody here regarding G4, request for approval of resolution establishing the grant program, we've been asked to hold that for the following week until we coordinate that with the cities. Mr. Crockett, did you want to make a comment on that, or since this is your agenda item?
Sure. This is, we're still, we're still going to be approving the interlocal agreement. That is item G1. This just outlines the details of how the CARES Act, the Weber CARES Program will function. So we just want to have some people throughout the county and different departments provide feedback and have peer review of that policy before it's finally passed. So we'll bring that next week.
Okay. With your permission, Commissioners, we're going to hold G4 for the following week. Mr. Crockett is working on that with our team. Let me just mention, Mr. Crockett's done an excellent job in working with our cities. This, as we talked this morning, this has been a moving target, a very fast-moving target, but very critical that we have the right agreements with the cities moving forward so that they understand and we understand exactly what will take place.
My understanding, Mr. Chair, if I might just butt in, is that other counties have actually, you commented on this and would love for this to be a matter of public record, but other counties actually hired professional services. Can you comment anymore on that?
Yeah, that's, and I mentioned this this morning. I'll just take a second. So as this CARES Act funding has taken place, we made the decision, Commissioners, with your involvement about two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, that we would build our own program with very, I would say, very general directions from both the Fed and the state. So we really had to build this, build this house, as I'm going to call it, without a real floor plan, without a blueprint. And we asked our people within the county that I had very much respect for in their professionalism, their ability to make this happen, to pull this off in a short period of time. So with Mr. Crockett, John Bond, Scott Park, we have Lanell Jensen involved with that, Brooke Stewart, Holland, Will Banks was involved with that, obviously. We pulled this together, and we pulled this together in what I consider a very timely manner and without having to go to outside vendors that we would look for at substantial more cost to, to stand up a program that, in my opinion, would probably be inferior to the program that we built. I'm very happy, again, to see the work that I mentioned this morning, that these people have put together. Just is very energizing for me, and the people of Weber County should be very proud, just like I am of this, of this team. So thank you for that, Commissioner. So let's move to G1, request for review and ratify the 2020 tax sale properties. April, you're back on.
I am on. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. How are we?
Welcome, April.
All right. So Weber County completed its 2020 property tax sale on June 25th. As you know, the tax sale is one of our least favorite parts of our job. We never want to sell someone's property, but at times we are required to by law, and it's only to recover the taxes, penalties, interest, and any overages go back to the property owner. While the Clerk Auditor's Office runs point for the tax sale, this auction is a result of six months of exhaustive efforts by many county offices. With this in mind, we'd like to thank the Recorder Surveyors Office for their tireless work in reviewing the list of delinquent parcels to ensure that there are no complications with the boundary descriptions. We thank the Attorney's Office and especially Courtland Erickson for being available to analyze special cases and advise us on the best way to proceed. We thank the Treasurer's Office for quickly posting all the payments throughout this time, which keeps our process running smoothly and efficiently. Also, the Sheriff's Office. We appreciate Deputy Garcia, who is here for the tax sale, keeping an eye on everything, making sure it all went smoothly. Finally, of course, I have to thank Roger Brunker for his tireless assistance and unwavering patience with my innumerable questions. We started this year with an even 100 delinquent properties eligible for sale. By the day of the tax sale, there were only eight units up for auction. Of the eight units offered, only one had no bidders, so therefore was struck off to the county. There was one unique unit in that it was consisted of 30 parcels in a development, and they were all sold together as one economic unit. As a reminder, Utah Code allows a 10-day period for the sale, after the sale, for anyone with concerns about the sale to submit those concerns to the commission before the tax sale is ratified. The commission then has the opportunity to address those concerns before making a final decision. Therefore, Commissioners, unless you have any questions, we present the results for your ratification.
Thank you, April, for that presentation. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I do believe it should be mentioned that we did have one parcel questioned, and we did, in fact, meet on it to make sure everything was in order, and we determined it was. It's unusual. Normally, when we hold these sales, they're small insignificant pieces, and this year, we happened to have a couple of pieces in there that were substantial. And so it was, created more interest, and it was interesting to watch this thing go forward and take place. I've not had a lot of involvement in these over the years, but when you get something that's a little larger like this, it was interesting to watch it take place. And I think it causes you guys a lot more work, doesn't it, because you have a lot more people calling?
Right. A lot of questions about those. That's for sure.
Right. With that, you ready?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we ratify the sale as presented to us today.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Jenkins.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Harvey with comment.
I want to thank April for you and the team, as aforementioned, Roger and the rest of them, for, and John Bond's office. We have a great process here. A lot of people think that auctions are simple because they have an eBay account. That is nothing like a live auction. For many people haven't been to a, an auto auction or have been to a horse auction or a real estate auction in the past. They've not been on the steps of the courthouse. West Properties are, it's a different way. It's, live auctions are often different. And the, just like going to a concert as opposed to listening to a CD, or going to a play as opposed to listening to a movie, it's different. And there's a lot of excitement, but I appreciate the professionalism shown and the explanations given. A lot of times, think... A lot of times things can change. When they do, I know that they were noted in a timely manner, and they were even presented verbally before we took action on them. We can do, in a live auction setting, we can do no better than this, and I appreciate the lengths that all of you went to to make sure that Weber County and that was represented correctly, but also the people who were there to bid were also notified correctly. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. April and Roger, yeah, I'd just second that. This is not an easy task. We know that. A lot of detail goes into this, because if the details are left out, then we are basically going to be left holding the bag on potential conflict. And so it requires a great amount of detail, great amount of work. You guys did a super job with this, so appreciate it very much, as in you have in previous years. With that, Commissioners, did you make that motion?
I did.
Commissioner Jenkins, and we had a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Properties on the tax sale for 2020 are approved. Let's go to Agenda Item Two, request for approval of resolution of the County Commissioners of Weber County approving an interlocal agreement. Wait, that should be four.
Three.
It's switched. That's the one we postponed, right?
We will postpone item G four. We will still hear items, item G two.
G two still okay then?
Yes.
Okay, let me go back. Approval of resolution, the County Commission of Weber County approving an interlocal agreement for the distribution of CARES Act funding. So maybe you can explain to me just the difference between this and G four. Holland?
Yeah, and Chris asked me to come give a little bit of history of how we got to where we are with this interlocal.
Thank you.
So the interlocal agreement is the agreement between the county and all of the participating cities with this CARES Act program. And so each city has reviewed this interlocal, and it'll be an agreement in order for us to take 90% of their CARES Act fund from this first distribution and put it into our program. So essentially, hey, let me back up a little bit. The county received $8 million in this first distribution, and we could receive up to 24 if we continue to push the money out, as the guidelines, as you mentioned earlier, from the federal program. The cities received a certain amount of funding as well in three different distribution blocks based on their population. So instead of each city standing up their own grant program to support small businesses, the county stepped up and said, let us take that on, we'll, we'll support the program. However, you will need to transfer your funds so that it can go into that, that bucket of grant loans, so we can support our businesses in a better way. We've had all of the cities across the county participate, except for Ogden City, who's standing up their own program. So if you're a business within the city limits of Ogden, you'll have to apply through Ogden Cares, which is their program. And Harrisville is setting up their program. So if you're a business in Harrisville, you'll need to call their city offices. So as a part of this, this grant rollout, we needed an agreement between the cities and the county to receive those funds. So it's been a tireless effort. If you think about trying to get 15 different entities to sign one agreement in about a seven-day window, Chris and his team have worked really hard to make that happen. We've seen a handful of them come in already with the city council approvals from various cities. We said we would look at this and present it to the Commission today, and then the cities will do that as well. We will not distribute any funds to their city until we have an interlocal agreement that's finalized between the county and those entities. Does that answer, the, the item that we took off was more of the, the policy of the program. This is specific to the interlocal agreement with the cities.
Got it. Yeah, I understand now. Chris, did you want to add to that?
No, thank you, Holland. I told her I would follow up with all the boring legal stuff. So, but no, she did a fantastic job of outlining the program. But yes, the item G four does relate to a provision in the interlocal that says the county will develop a governing policy outlining the process for receiving and objectively evaluating grant applications. And so we want to have, we want to be really careful about that policy to make sure that we are in compliance with all of the requirements under the CARES Act, that these funds are being closely monitored, that they are going to qualify reimbursable expenses, and for things that are permitted under federal law. And so that one, we just, we're going to present to you next week, but that will actually be the internal governing policy. This agreement right here will allow the cities to make that financial contribution and provide the legal authority for the county to make distributions on their behalf. And thank you for your, your kind comments earlier, and I have to pass along my thanks to my own team of attorneys. They are absolutely phenomenal attorneys and amazing to work with. And then the attorneys through this, for the cities have been great to work with as well. To really turn around an interlocal agreement in such a short amount of time, I was surprised. I was, I was so happy that it's happening, because one little change can start the whole process over again. So it shows a real collaborative effort between the counties and the cities to get this going, to get those funds out to the residents and the small businesses as fast as possible.
Thank you for that, Chris. Obviously, Chris deserves a lion's share of the credit, making, number one, making sure that we're on solid legal ground, that we don't get, get into trouble with the CARES Act funding process, and just the process of working with our cities in this short period of time. You know, I want to give a shout out to all the mayors and council, because they easily could have delayed this way past where we would have been to, to launch this yesterday at 3:00. And, and with their support, and with Chris, Holland, your group, and the efforts you made with the mayors, I'm still very much impressed with how fast you pulled this together. And, and not only pulled it together fast, we pulled it together in a very legal, efficient manner that I think is going to benefit the public. In fact, I know that's going to benefit the public as we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, Holland?
No, sir, unless you guys have any questions.
That's a resolution. Ready for comment or motion?
Resolution number 20, I'll, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 20 as presented today.
Motion to approve Resolution 20.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Jenkins.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair Faurer?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We're approved. Let's go to request, item three, request for approval to, excuse me, let me start again, request to approve an interlocal agreement between Weber County and the Weber Morgan Health Department for the lease of land and for the provision of certain administrative legal and personnel services. Mr. Crockett, again to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a request for an interlocal, approval of an interlocal agreement. I'm, I'm excited about this one, because this represents an effort to clean up a lot of, of things and to formalize the current relationship with the Health Department in accordance with the Interlocal Cooperation Act. State statute requires that counties provide and establish a local health department. The current health department operates out of county-owned buildings, and we wanted to establish an agreement that would allow for continued operations into the future. The current buildings right now, one is paid off, that's the Weber Morgan Annex Building, but the other one is subject to a general obligation bond. Those buildings were paid for with restricted Health Department dollars. And so this sets up a lease agreement where the Health Department will continue making those bond payments. The buildings will still be titled in Weber County's name, but the Health Department will pay for the bond payments, all of the costs for operating and maintaining that Health Department out of their restricted Health Department fund. While we were doing this, we wanted to formalize other services that the county currently provides to the Health Department, including personnel. All employees over at the Health Department are actually Weber County employees, that the county makes a contribution to the Health Department to aid in its operation. Also, the county provides certain administrative services, such as audit and financial services, purchasing services. And then also, by statute, we provide legal services and the services of our treasurer. And so this just formalizes it so that in the future, when people have questions, they can turn to this document and understand what the relationship between the county and the Health Department is. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Questions for Chris?
I do have so.
Go ahead.
You know, you just said something that I didn't get out of this, and I want to drill down a little bit on, and that is the fact that the employees at the Health Department are Weber County employees, they just work for the Health Department.
Yes, there's a provision on the Interlocal Cooperation Act that allows a county entity to contribute its personnel to another local entity. And so it's, it is legally authorized. Our HR department handles the hiring and the payroll services for individuals working over the Health Department. They're subject to Weber County employment policies.
Is that the way most other counties in the state operate? Do we know?
I don't know. It, it's interesting with this one, because if a county operates a single county health department and it's not an interlocal entity, it would be underneath the umbrella of a county.
Uh huh.
But whereas we have a multi-county health department with Morgan County and Weber County, we've actually established a separate legal entity. And as part of the, setting that up, part of Weber County's contribution was to provide personnel, whereas Morgan's contribution is financial.
All right, well, I, I don't want to push on this, because it works, and I'm okay with it. It's just, one more thing around here that is abnormal. We do so many things in this county where we don't have ownership, where we don't, our locations are different. Now we provide people for different institutions. It's just very unusual, the way some of these things operate and not clear. So I'm, I'm going to be okay with it. I'm going to vote for this. But in the meantime, I don't know, you know, I really can't help but wonder if we shouldn't look at this.
You are more than welcome to look at this as the policymakers. This can be revised at any time. I would say there are other examples of other entities where this has happened, like, for example, I'd say Weaver, Weaver Morgan Narcotics Strike Force. As part of the agreement, employees are contributed to the joint collaborative effort. And so I, I, I get where you're coming from, that it does seem a little, present an odd situation, but I think it helps more formalize it so that anyone coming back can say, well, why is this happening? So we've outlined it and explained it. You know, why are we, why is the Health Department operating out of county-owned buildings? Well, now we have an agreement that establishes that history and states why.
Yeah. So if you notice in here, the parking lot, we've assigned that entire parking lot to them. I was a little taken back by that. Sean, I can't help but look back there, kind of a shine in that southeast corner of this building, or this room. We've not left ourselves any room here for growth. Is this appropriate, that we assign that whole thing to them? Is that the way it's always been?
Yes.
And we just kind of share it?
We do.
All right. Okay, is that?
Okay. Commissioner Harvey, questions?
Good, great questions, and I'm glad they were brought up. I don't have any more questions. Having served there with you on that board, it's a little more clear, but appreciate that, Chris. That's a lot of work getting that done. Thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, again, thanks for your effort on this. Commissioner, I just might mention, since I do sit on that board, you know, I, I've read through this, we've had discussions in the Health Board meeting. This really, I think, gives, even though the property is still under Weber County, we still hold title of this property, I think needs to be clear. This just gives some assurance to the Health Department, when that bond's paid off, that they've got a home for the future under this lease agreement, without a future commissioner, somebody else coming in and using that for a different, a different purpose, or increasing a lease rate, or whatever the, so I, I think it gives the Health Department, obviously they are part of us, even though it may be indirect, the ability to continue to function within their budget. So I, I support this, Commissioner. With that, I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we approve that interlocal agreement between Weber County and the Weber Morgan Health Department.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
You do, second.
And a second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. G four, request to approve, well, we're going to skip G four. Hold that. So let's go to G five, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and the Utah Holstein Association to hold the Weber County Dairy Days at the Golden Spike Event Center. Mr. Duncan Olson.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is another one of those events that they, they lost their dates through the spring and had to move back. We've hosted the Dairy Days for several years. I don't know if you know an exact number, but a while. It's, it's kind of a unique event that's turned into a nationally-streamed Dairy Days event. They use the backside of the auction arena, so they don't take up tons of functional space for us, so it works out pretty good. It's a trade in, in rates for a sponsorship for the Golden Spike in Weber County.
Got it. Questions for Mr. Olson?
So I can't help but mention, Mr. Chair, that this used to be the Plain City Dairy Days.
Was it Holstein, or was it another breed?
It was primarily Holstein, but we had, I'm trying to think the other cows.
Guernseys.
Guernseys, thank you.
I was thinking Jersey.
We had Guernseys out there. And so we did have a division for those, and when I was a kid and we went to elementary school, we'd get out to school for our part-time, or, you know, playtime or whatever, and we were able to go out and wander through the cows, and it was really interesting to watch it. Yeah, this has been there ever since I was a little boy. So it's good to see it exist still today.
Right. All right, thank you. Anything else, Duncan?
That's it.
Commissioners?
Motion to adjur, or to, yeah, adjur. Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Harvey promised me that we would sometime in the future have a Weber County Bison Day at the Golden Spike.
We've still got that, we're, we're working on the contract right now to bring back the bison in December, so we're hoping to keep them around for a while.
Good, let's do that in December. Yeah, I, we need to keep that group here. It's a good group.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, and let me just mention, probably no better setup than I can think that has the facilities to handle that type of animal.
Yeah, and, you know, we've worked so well with them over the years, being able to, to bring in and install those animals. Very few places, I think, could do it as easily and as functionally as we can.
I would agree. I think that started with Commissioner Harvey, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe so.
Yeah, he can take credit.
There's a go.
We're going to get him a set of bison horns just to wear around. Okay, with that, let's go to G six, discussion and/or action for final subdivision approval for Trappers Ridge at Wolf Creek P R U D. Mr. Burton?
Good morning.
That will be Phases seven A, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Mr. Burton?
Phase seven A. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the final process, final step in the process for a subdivision approval for this Trappers Ridge at Wolf Creek, consisting of five lots. It's located there off of Big Horn Parkway, about 5,800 east there. This is, this, this subdivision received final approval from the Planning Commission back in March of last year. Since then, they've been working on installing improvements. They could have, they could have given us funds and recorded at that time, but they've, they've chosen to install some improvements. They have given us some funds for the remainder of the improvements. They've given us $298,500, excuse me, $298,572.18 for those improvements. So that's also part of what they're asking for, is approval of the improvement agreement. I did, I did want to mention, I think some of you were included on an email from the Wolf Creek Water District. They stated that they have not received fees from the developer yet. As, as county planning, what the, the thing that we ask for when we're talking about water is we ask for a, what's called a capacity assessment letter, which states that the district does have the capacity to serve those lots. When it comes to fees, that's entirely up to the developer and the district to pay. Now, as, as a policy, not, not, and not part of our ordinances, as a policy, we do make sure that those are paid before we record the plat. It is my understanding that those fees have not been paid yet, and we're, we're fine to not record the plat until that happens. Procedurally, we're asking, we're recommending that you, that you approve this and, and sign the subdivision plat today.
So it's clear, based upon that email, that a will-serve letter at this point in time is not required for this stage?
That's correct.
We, just, just so clarify, so it's transparent, we were asked to hold this by a member of the, I guess it was the Wolf Creek Water. That's not part of our ordinance that will be required sometime in the future before final plat recording. Is that correct?
Correct. We were. We... Again, we require that as a policy, just because we do take the comments from our water districts very seriously. We understand that those fees need to be paid. But just as a policy, we will withhold that from being recorded until we get confirmation from the district.
Makes sense. So, we just want to make that clarification for anybody listening, for those people that are with the water mountain, water and sewer, they understand what the ordinance says. So, with that, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it does. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, back to you for action or comment.
The question I have here, Mr. Chair, has to do with the recording. So, we hold this off from being recorded. What the heck? Do they go in there and able to sell the lots and move along? And next thing you know, we find out that we allowed this thing to take place and nothing got recorded, right?
Are you asking if we do allow it to be recorded?
Well, yeah, that's the point here, is we said, "Well, we're not going to allow it to be recorded until the fees are paid." It doesn't seem to be that big of a hammer. Am I wrong?
It's not a hammer. And the only reason it's not is because it's not a requirement of the law to withhold recording. And if, you know, we're looking at updating our subdivision ordinance right now. We can certainly add that in there. But as far as subdivision entitlements go under the current ordinances, they actually could record that plat without paying those fees.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioners, additional questions or comments? Not a beat. Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the final subdivision for Trapper's Ridge at Wolf Creek with the caveat that we not do that final, or you not sign off on that until those are satisfied with the water district.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to agenda item G6, request for consideration and/or action on final approval of the 3,600 West Road Dedication 2017-01, corrected, consisting of rededication of Weber County property for 3,600 West. And it's supposed to be Devron, but you're in place of Devron. Go ahead.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Devron's not feeling well this morning, so he asked me to come here and present this agenda item on his behalf. He also gave me a couple bullet points that he'd like me to just share real quick on this thing.
Go ahead.
Since the 1930s, Weber County has been the fee title owners of a 33-foot strip of land in the area of 3,600 West Street. In 2017, the county commission was approached to take the formal action of dedicating that property to the public as a public right-of-way. Where the majority of that strip of land was underneath the existing roadway, the commission decided to dedicate that strip as public right-of-way. After the dedication, some of the landowners in the area expressed their concern about a small part of the strip of land that was not directly under the traveled roadway. The county agreed to go to arbitration with the landowners regarding the matter at the state property rights ombudsman's office. The arbitration panel came up with a resolution that they deemed correct, and they directed Weber County to dedicate a corrected plat showing the strip of land on the location they determined. What is being presented to you today, this plat, is... For your approval is the corrected dedication exactly as the arbitration panel wanted it prepared. I don't know what details you guys have on this, but if you have any questions on the plat, I'd be happy to explain. I've got some assistance in the room, if need be.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner? I think we've reviewed this. We talked about this in a work session.
This is Commissioner Jenkins.
Yeah, this is 3,600 West. This is the realignment of that road out there. I'm not sure I totally agree with your analysis of what happened, but the point is, we're here today. And Mr. Hanson is in the audience here today. Are you okay with this, Doug?
I'm at 98 percent, which is close enough.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Well...
Jody's also...
Jody, you okay with this?
Well, it's not a small portion, as you say.
Right.
33 feet ain't a small portion of land, so you say. But yes, it's the best we can come up with, that they're putting the road, ownership of the land, where the road actually is.
You bet.
You've been fighting it to get it...
True.
Where the road actually is.
So, listen, from somebody who represents that area... Well, I represent the whole county, but I do represent that area.
You know that area.
Yeah. I've driven this road more in the last year than I've driven it in my lifetime. And I want to thank you guys for working this. This has not been an easy thing. You know, we forced a citizen out there to take other citizens to court. It created all kinds of ill feelings. This was an ugly action from start to finish for everybody involved. And I just am glad to get it solved. Yeah. You know, we pushed for where we felt our rights were, and frankly, from these folks' point of view, we trampled on their rights a little bit because of it. So, they elected to go to arbitration, and we didn't fight that. Well, we were okay with going to arbitration, and when you prevailed there and we were told to realign, we just wanted to solve. So, I was pleased with this. Devron, our...
Surveyor.
Surveyor, thank you. He was not necessarily happy with it, but... And it's those rights that he represented to us was why. But in the end, Devron didn't have a problem with realigning it. You know, I mean, we do what the law tells us to, and we're okay with that. And we should obey the law too, as a county. And so, we come to this point, and I'm very pleased on our end that we have put this thing to bed. And we hope that there's no terribly hard feelings. I know there's some feelings, and there can't help but be. And I don't hold any grudges because of that. That's just the way it is. I just hope that the feelings don't run so deep that we can't work with each other in the future, because we've still got a long road ahead of us in the future. We're going to improve that road, and we've got people that are building at the end of it, and there's a lot that's going to happen on that road in the future. And believe me, we want to work with you. So, thank you. I appreciate you guys working with us on this.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Jenkins. Commissioner Harvey, comments or...
This, I do, just for the two of you that are here, you know, I want to thank you, Commissioner Jenkins, for, again, you're... You have so much knowledge from the past and things that have happened. And my learning, coming in and not having much experience on this type of thing, trying to make a good decision, and also supporting staff, was important. I want to publicly apologize to either one of you if I've caused you any heartache personally here, but I'm glad that the resolution is coming to a head and that we're moving forward. 30 some-odd feet is a lot. It's not a little piece of property, and I respect where we're going with that. But I also respect the process and what I've learned through this, and it'll help me be better informed moving forward, and I'll carry those things that I've learned moving forward. So, I just wanted you both to hear that. Appreciate that. So, I'd make a motion if you're ready to receive...
I'm ready.
This ought to be really, since this is what Commissioner Jenkins is, he ought to be bringing this one up.
I think I'm going to go to Commissioner Jenkins.
I'm more willing to make the motion that we approve, that we approve the final actions and the corrected dedication and alignment of 3,600 West in Weber County as described by these descriptions.
And we have a motion? Do we have a second? And we have a second. Before I place that motion, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Hanson, the group out there. This is a great example of not letting perfect be the enemy of good. There was no perfect solution to this, that I could see, where everybody, we had 100% of the public happy out there. But I think if you're 98%, that's good. And, you know, I appreciate the efforts that we... That you took as a community out there to make this happen. Commissioner Jenkins, you know, we've been involved with this for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Quite a while. And so, to bring this to a final head without going to court and having this tied up in the courts for who knows how long, in my opinion, was a good resolution. So, with that, I'm going to place the motion.
Roses are also should be thanked for their involvement.
Yeah. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One more comment on this, so we all understand.
Go ahead.
You notice Mr. Hipwell isn't sitting here.
I noticed that.
Well, he's the guy that got the negative side of this decision. And in fact, we're going to proceed now to condemning his property to extend this road. And so, there is a downside to this, and I want it to be... Make sure we all understand that not everybody went here without being hurt.
Right.
He is in fact... Now, he will be paid for it.
But he'll be compensated.
He will. He'll be compensated for it. So... But he's not happy, and I don't want to represent this as a kumbaya, because there are some that are not happy.
There's some less happy than others. There's no question.
Less happy, that's right.
We know that very well. All right. Let's go to Commissioner Comments.
I've kind of made my comments today. This has actually been a good meeting, and I appreciate it.
Commissioner Harvey?
No, thank you.
I'd second that, and I just want to give thanks to, again, our great Weber County employees, my fellow commissioners. We've had some, in my opinion, some challenging times this past several months. We come to work every day, and every day seems to be a new adventure, no matter what that is.